All right, we'll get started. The notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier News on January 12th, 2021, as well as posting on the city's website. Clerk, can I have a roll call?
I'll tell members Davis.
President.
Councilman McKenna, absent during roll call, however, he did indicate that he'd be about 10 minutes late. Councilman McCray.
President.
Councilwoman Mills Ransom.
President.
Councilwoman Welch.
President.
Vice President Good.
President.
Council President Hockaday.
President.
We have six members present in a call.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the following minutes? That was for the combined session dated May 10th, 2021.
Moved.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, the motion is approved for the minutes. Okay, the floor is now open for scheduled public hearing. An application for this State of New Jersey Department of EPA, I'm sorry, Environmental Protections, Urban Parks and Grant to install an ADA accessible playground at Silas Field located in North Avenue and Netherwood Avenue. We're going to have a public hearing on that now. There's any member of the public who wishes to be heard, hit the hand icon and you will be unmuted. Do we have anyone slated to speak yet? Anyone raise their hand regarding?
There is no one with their hand raised at this moment.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion to close public hearing on this?
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Public hearing on this is now closed. We will now proceed with two brief presentations on these applications, starting with Penone Engineers on the Silas Field application. And then followed by Remington and Vernick with the Rushmore application.
Council President, if I could just, if I could just interrupt, there's, there's actually two public hearings that we have to have. The one is for Sidler Field and the other one is an application to Green Acres for the Phase Two of the Rushmore Avenue recreational complex improvements. On Rushmore Avenue and West Thirsty Streets, we have to have two public hearings.
So why don't we open up public hearing on the second one for the green phase Rushmore Avenue recreational complex now. Public hearing is now open on, for any public, member of the public who wishes to hear, be heard on this. Move it 10, 15 seconds just to see if anyone raises their hand.
Still no one with their hand raised.
Okay, well, hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Both.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Public hearing is now closed. We'll now proceed with the presentations. Penone, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Penone is appreciative of your time. We'd like to get right to it. Briefly share my screen, maybe part of the easiest way to show this. So on the screen now, you should probably be seeing Sidler Field. The purpose of the grant is to update the existing playground equipment that is located near the intersection of Netherwood, which is where my mouse is, and North Avenue, which is the way that my mouse is directing now. Let me zoom in here a little bit. So this is the existing playground equipment. And the intention is, of the project is to upgrade this to be ADA compliant. That would include making sure that there's an accessible path from the street to the playground equipment. And it would need to be resurfaced to an ADA compliant surface. And the equipment itself would have to be updated to, so that it's ADA compliant. And that, that's pretty much enough and bolts of the project. If you have any questions, I'd certainly like to answer them now.
This will be similar to what's had over at Mill Campbell right now. If you all saw the ADA playground over there, similar to what's located there, so.
That's correct, yeah.
I have a question.
Right ahead, Council.
When will this begin and how long will it take?
The, the, we're just going to apply for the grant now. Typically, the grant approval is handed out in the fall, probably September, October. And the improvements themselves would likely take place in the spring of next year, 2025.
And Council, just, you know, we applied for the grant, we haven't received it yet. You know, we were submitting an application for that. They're accepting five municipalities in the state of New Jersey for these grants. Total amount's like $2.5 million they have. So we're hoping to be one of those towns to be selected for this grant. This is the first time this grant, this urban parks grant has come out. So we're trying to try to, you had to be in it to win it, right? So we're trying to go about to get that grant.
Thank you.
I also have a question.
Please go right ahead, Council.
So before my question, I just want to say that I am happy to see another ADA accessible playground coming to the first ward with the other one being at Mill Campbell already. But my question is, in making the ADA accessible, are we going to make the entryway to the park where the playground is also ADA accessible? Because right now, there's like a step or two that you have to go up. So in this, is that factored in as well?
Right, so I believe that the stipulation of the grant itself is that the playground itself has to be ADA compliant, and that includes the access from the street. So yes, it'll have an access that's ADA compliant to the playground, to the playground area itself.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Okay, thank you for the presentation.
All right, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
And for the rest of council members, this is a resolution 21221 when it does come up, you know, for both.
Thank you. And we'll now have Representative Remington and Vernick as well. Are they on the call?
Good evening, Mayor and council people. I am Samantha Boonstrom from Remington and Vernick Engineers. I will be speaking on behalf of Wendell Bibbs. Unfortunately, he had a medical procedure scheduled for tonight. So I want to start off by sharing my screen real quick. Okay, so back in 2019, I had presented on the Green Acres application that we are applying for, for the Rushmore Playground, as it was called at that time. I just wanted to give an update that with that grant money, we were successfully completed the installation of the soccer fields, well, the multi-sport fields, the gravel parking lot, the kid area here. And then to be completed in Phase One will be the basketball courts. But also, that's been completed is the perimeter fencing. Now, the 2021 application for Green Acres is opening up, and it is our intention on behalf of the city of Plainfield to apply for it. Now, this originally in 2019, we had broken out the project into four phases. However, we successfully was awarded the grant amount that we went for, and we were able to do way more than we had originally intended. So therefore, now instead of four phases, we would like to be able to break it out into two. So the final areas that we are hoping to improve at the Rushmore Avenue recreational complex is now the, a conversion of the kid pool to a splash pad, the main pool improvements, playground, and then also a pavilion area. Now, just to break down what each of the improvements might have in these sections. For the playground area, we do intend to include a multi-age playground sets and multi-age swing sets that are also ADA compliant, as well as any musical features, park benches, and eight-foot wide asphalt pathway. The main pool improvements will include enhancements to the pool area surface, updating the pool equipment in the pool house, and also including a bathroom slash changing room building. Now, for the conversion of the existing kid pool area into a splash pad, this will include installing a new splash pad area, water features, and a splash pad pump, splash pad pump house equipment. The other overall miscellaneous improvements that will be included into this grant amount will be an eight-foot asphalt pathway connecting each of these amenities together. It'll include waste receptacles, park benches, picnic tables, landscaping improvements, and overall the entrance archway enhancements. And with that, I wanted to just state that the overall improvements are estimated to be $2.8 million. With that, we are hoping to get a 75% grant from the Green Acres program with a 25% loan that would be paid off as a 0% interest over 20 years. So I would like to take this time, if anybody has any questions, or if there is any public comment that needs to be spoken on. I'll stop sharing.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions from council colleagues regarding this presentation?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Davis?
Um, so you mentioned that we will be going out for a grant. Since we already received the grant in the past, does this make us more competitive or more likely to receive the grant this time around?
Definitely. The Green Acres program highly encourages to continue their grant applications to enhance the park that has already been, that has already been awarded. They actually encourage for future grants to continue through there. This way, they know that you're keeping up with actually using the grant money for, for its purposes.
So is it safe to say that it will be a success? The, the receiving of the grant?
Yes, we are very hopeful. Since we are successful with the 2019 grant, this continuing forward with it and finishing out the overall phasing of this project, it's more than likely whether they would be successful in the second grant.
They have to speak with Green Acres themselves, Green Acres themselves. They were just happy with this, with Phase One, the inspection of Phase One of the project, with this synthetic filled over there. So yes, with them inclined to give us the funding needed to complete the project. But she said this, typical with that about getting projects completed, Councilman.
Thank you, Director. Things are looking very good over there, and we look forward to seeing the finished product. Thank you.
Yeah, we're very happy to see how everything has improved for the project.
And with this resolution, there's going to be some amendments to the resolution that you have in front of you with the numbers. When we do get to 213-21, because it went from 24 to 28, the overall project, they get done. And I can read everything for the record as we get to that resolution.
No problem, no problem. Any other questions from council colleagues? Follow-up questions regarding what we saw? This is truly an exciting project. We already see the fruits of our labor and the work that we've put in and the grants that we've been awarded. I certainly commend the administration for putting together a thorough and comprehensive plan that has led to this success and am very glad to see it being continued. So much-needed improvements over there. This, this will be something that the, that the residents of the fourth ward, as well as the entire Plainfield, will be able to enjoy for years to come.
And Mr. Council President, with the mayor's foresight, we'll continue to progress, you know, to continue, keep it going. It's a big thing, it's just a win-win all around.
Yeah, especially in light of the fact that, you know, we're, with the grant and then a 0% interest loan over 20 years, I mean, this is, it's almost like they're giving, it's a gift almost, you know? But it's well-needed over there, residents deserve it, and we're happy to bring it to them. Happy to partner with the administration to do that. Okay, so thank you so much, Samantha.
Thank you.
We're really proud of the work that you're doing over there and wish you well as you continue with the project.
Thank you, yes.
All right. Okay, so we'll now move to the formal meeting portion. We're going to move to consideration of public hearing, second reading and final passage. Clerk, read MC 2021-19 by title and certify that it's complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2021-19 is an ordinance granting title 39 jurisdiction to the city of Plainfield over roads and parking lots at the Mullenberg Medical Arts Complex. Application PB 2017-27, 1202-50 Randolph Road, 1203-21 Park Avenue, 1223-51 Park Avenue, 1201-39 Moffett Avenue, Randolph Road. See if I certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on May 15th, 2021.
Floor is now open for any member of the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance. As customary, hit the hand icon if you wish to be heard, and you will be unmuted. State your name and address for the record. Floor is now open.
No one with their hand raised.
Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance.
Go move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, ordinance shall be published as required by law.
Moved.
Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Mills Ransom.
Yes.
Welch.
Yes.
Vice President Good.
Yes.
President Hockaday. Yes. Six in favor and opposed, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to public comments limited to resolutions, motions and ordinances to be introduced on first reading. A total of 30 minutes has been allocated for that. If you wish to be heard, hit the hand icon to be recognized and you'll be unmuted. Name and address for the record, you'll be given three minutes. The floor is now open. Mr. Michelson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. William Michelson, 556 Belvedere Avenue. I'm chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission. The item I'd like to talk to you about is MC 2021-20. Adopting the Sixth Amendment to the 197 scattered sites redevelopment plan. There's a lot more history to that than what's on your agenda or that you need to deal with tonight. It currently involves just one property, 228 to 236 East Ninth Street. It's technically three lots, they want to combine them into two. And that's a lot that's been just sitting there overgrown for over 40 years. The planning board recently amended the plan that includes this and many other sites to increase the density from four dwelling units per acre to 16. Actually, the proposal before them would have gone to 20. And to allow not just first and second, one and two family homes, which are the only permitted uses there, but three-family and multifamily. On a policy basis, I oppose this because this takes away the discretion of both the planning board and the Historic Preservation Commission. If the council says that up to 16 units per acre is allowable, then it's done and we're stuck with it. The normal process is to approach the boards for variances and to negotiate. A number of things could be traded off, design, parking, size of units, things like that. In this case, the plan is to build two new small apartment houses. And I've never seen plans yet. I've let it be known, it's important to us that they be similar in style and shape and scale to the rest of the houses along East Ninth Street, which is integral to the Crescent Avenue Historic District. On the specifics, there's nothing before us, either you or me, that shows how closely they want to adhere to our design regulations. It was actually proposed that the matter should not even have to go back to the HPC for a certificate of appropriateness. I think that's been removed from the proposal, but I'm not quite sure. The Crescent Area District needs a lot of help. There's too many multifamily houses there, many of which are illegal and have just been allowed to aggregate over the years. There's way too little parking and allowing the kind of density that this plan called for is just going to make those things worse instead of better.
Council President, this speaker time is up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Michelson. During the hearing of this resolution, I'm sure there'll be a more robust discussion from the directors regarding some of the concerns that she raised. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Piano?
Timothy Piano, 1405 Martine Avenue. I am also bringing up objection to the density level in our neighborhoods. When you, just going down East Ninth Street from the library onto Watchong, there is so much parking traffic going on. We don't need that artery filled. And there's also a speeding issue. When you come around that corner, if we're adding more people to that area, cars are just flying down from Park Avenue around the curve over to Watchong. It just is, it's very fast-moving street. Two years ago, you just, you made one side of the street parking only, which is perfect, but it just gives a runway. So if we're adding more apartments in that area, less parking, it is going to be congestion all over the place, and it's just hurting the neighborhood's feeling. And we have very few parks and quiet walking areas in the neighborhood, and this would just add one more area that's excessive to overbuilding. And it's just trying to keep everything quiet. Like, people are looking at Plainfield coming here because of the historic districts, they're loving the new apartments that are being put out, but at the same time, we don't want to take our neighborhoods and turn them into apartment alleys. You know, it's just, it's sad that, you know, people who are investing in their homes are going to lose out because no one wants to buy a home that has apartment complexes next to it. They want to live in a neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Johnson, name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm Jennifer Johnson. I live at 816 Third Place, and I would also like to speak to the density and the apartment that is being proposed for East Ninth Street. I have lived in Plainfield for 18 years. I have raised my daughter on this street. And the last thing we need in this overcrowded neighborhood that already is not supported by the directors and the existing departments on our density problem is a 16-unit apartment building, considering we've had two shootings on that corner in the last six months. And we've have reported several issues of illegal apartments that we get no support from the administration that's currently in office to help us get the illegal landlords to stop putting apartments in basements, in attics, and cutting up the existing buildings so we can lower our density. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. This is Romero. Name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, I'm Zanira Romero. I'm at 1216 Watchong Avenue. Good evening, Mayor Map, congratulations. And Ms. Burgess, it's nice to see you. I'm sure you're familiar with me. I just wanted to add on and compliment the comments that were made about the density. My comment is in relation to the density and also slash noise and speeding. So I think it's, it's a lot to digest, but I've addressed this multiple times. Living on Watchong, on the corner of Kensington and Watchong, I'm two houses in. I've witnessed a lot of this density problem, the speeding. But what I really want to talk about is, from the density, there's a lot of noise pollution. And I'd like to address that. I know tonight is probably not on your agenda, but I'd love to have a conversation about how we're going to manage the noise pollution, which is brought in by the density, multiple family apartments, and just the traffic on Watchong Avenue. And I'd love to really explore that probably in another conversation, but I wanted it on the record.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Anyone else for a public comment?
No one else has their hand raised.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing on motions and resolutions considered.
Move to Council President.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Public hearing is now closed.
Well, Council President, I'd just like to reflect for the record that Councilman McKenna is present and has joined us.
Sure, thank you. Okay, council members, are there any questions on resolutions R 190-21 through R 194-21? Questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, I do have a comment. Last month, our legislative resolutions were very heavy with resolutions of condolence to see this month's resolution with more, this month's agenda with more resolutions of celebration is wonderful. A couple of them really stick out to me as being special, with one of them being a resolution honoring and congratulating former council president Liz Urquhart on her 90th birthday. Many of us were able to join her yesterday for that celebration, and she's a pioneer in this city and what she has done for this council, for this city, for the first ward is something to be admired. And just to be able to celebrate that special milestone with her was amazing. So I'm glad that this is on here. Also, a resolution for the Historic Society of Plainfield celebrating their 100th anniversary is really important, and that's another institution that is important to our city. And Nancy Piar makes sure that anything we discuss in the city, she knows all the history behind it. And we appreciate people who allow us to see where we have come from as we work to go somewhere bigger and better.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? 190 through 194-21 is approved. Clerk, please proceed with the remaining motions.
Resolution R 195-21 granting the advice and consent to the appointment of Christine Exum to serve as alternate number two member of the Plainfield Planning Board.
Any questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, I may have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? The resolution is approved.
Resolution 196-21 granting a late fee waiver for retail food establishment license to Genesis Seventh Day Adventist Church located at 407 West Second Street.
Okay, scanning the screen for questions from council members. Hearing and seeing none, may I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any abstentions or opposition? Hearing none, this resolution is approved.
Resolution one ninety seven twenty one authorizing the renewal of three year agreement with Selective Benefits Group to provide investment advisory services for the city of Plainfield.
Any questions, council members? Do we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
Resolution one ninety eight twenty one authorizing approval to amend the calendar year twenty twenty one municipal budget by inserting local fiscal recovery fund items of revenue appropriation.
Questions from council members?
I have one question.
Sure.
The hazard pay line includes city employees, police department and fire?
At this time, all we're doing is moving the funds into hazard pay, but we haven't, we haven't yet, we have to first move the funds so that we can. Have the conversation and determine who will be eligible, who won't be eligible, create our criteria, make our policy. So that's all the next step, but we have to have the funds available to even have that conversation.
Okay, I appreciate that. Are, is it, maybe it's me, but aren't we approving the insertion of the funds and the expenditure of the funds?
I think you're just approving the insertion of the funds.
Correct.
Appropriating the money at this point. There's not, no authorization to spend anything.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Is approved.
Resolution one nine nine twenty one authorizing approval to amend the calendar year twenty twenty one municipal budget by inserting items of revenue and appropriate.
Questions from council members? In a motion and a second?
Moved.
Second.
In favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
Resolution two hundred twenty one authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Morris County Cooperating Pricing Council to renew membership they're in for the period of October first twenty twenty one. Through September thirtieth twenty twenty six.
Questions from council members? I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
Resolution two oh one twenty one authorizing approval to cancel and refund taxes due to a pilot effective February twenty sixth twenty twenty one.
Questions from council members? Never motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions, opposition? Resolution approved.
Resolution two oh two twenty one authorizing approval to cancel a tax sale certificate.
Any questions from council members? May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
Resolution two oh three twenty one authorize approval to cancel and refund the twenty twenty one taxes bill due to a hundred percent disabled veteran exemption.
Questions from council members? Never motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? The resolution is approved.
Resolution two oh four twenty one authorizing approval to apply for and accept the twenty twenty one state body armor replacement fund grant.
Questions from council? Motion in a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposition or abstentions? Resolution is approved.
Resolution two oh five twenty one authorizing a change order for the contracts submitted by Billy Constructing, Contracting and Restoration.
Questions from council? Motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposition and abstentions?
Council President, may I make a comment?
You may.
I'd just like to say it's good to know that. This roof will finally be finished after a while of having it. Restored, repaired, a replacement, actually. So I'm happy that this is finally going to be done. Hopefully, this will be it. I see Abby smiling. So hopefully, this will be it. Thank you so much.
I think we left it. All those in favor say aye. No abstentions? The resolution is approved.
Resolution two oh six twenty one authorizing the partial release of performance bonds and cash deposits associated with the Milenberg Medical Arts Complex.
Questions from council?
One question. So. When you have an issue related to what was approved by the planning board versus what was built. How, how is releasing, releasing this partial bond going to affect resolving that issue? And the issue in particular is the, on the apartment, the Randolph Apartment Building. There was to be, the approved plan by the planning board was a portico share that came off of the building. With columns and what they have is a metal awning. So where that change was approved and how we get it corrected if we release the performance bond is my question.
The city engineer has confirmed that Milenberg is in compliance. That's the person responsible for compliance, contractual compliance. As per the planning board. The performance bond is released primarily when a project is completed. They've also issued a maintenance bond at this point. That's part of releasing the performance bond. Is also, we now are in receipt of a maintenance bond for this project that we will hold for two years.
Okay, so the city engineer approved the change to the design?
The city engineer said that it complied, it complied with our requirements. Which allows the planner to tell the construction official to go ahead and execute certificates of occupancy.
But if a portico share was approved by the planning board, but it's not there, how is that, how did they miss that?
I'm not sure that they missed it, but I would have to go back and review it with the city engineer. But again, the city engineer has written a letter saying that they are in compliance.
Questions? Okay, I entertain a motion in a second.
Oh, move.
Second.
Okay, clerk, can I have a roll call?
Members Davis.
Yes.
McKenna.
No.
McCray.
Yes.
Those ransom.
Yes.
Welch.
Yes.
Vice President Good.
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday.
Yes.
In favor, one opposed, resolution passes. Resolution two seven twenty one instructing the city planning board to prepare recommendations for amendments to the city zoning and land development ordinance.
Questions from council? Motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? The resolution is approved.
Resolution two oh week twenty one designating MPL ten Holdings LLC as redeveloper for the redevelopment of certain properties in the city of Plainfield.
Questions from council? Motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposition or abstentions? The resolution is approved.
Resolution two oh nine twenty one designating TD Plus Partners LLC as redeveloper for the redevelopment of certain properties in the city of.
Questions from council?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
TD Plus Partners, this is a developer who has done multiple projects in the city of Plainfield, correct?
Yes, they did Station at Grant as well as the South Second Street Youth Center.
Okay, I thought so. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Further questions from council members? Motion in a second?
Moved.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions?
No.
Okay, opposition from Councilman McKenna should be noted?
We noted.
Resolution is approved.
In favor, one opposed for resolution two oh nine, resolution two ten twenty one authorizing the Historical Society of Plainfield. Submit a grant application to the New Jersey Historic Trust.
Questions from council members? Motion in a second?
Moved.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? The resolution is approved.
Resolution eleven twenty one authorizing approval to purchase forty seven decorative streetlight poles from state contract vendor. Vendor Pemberton Electric Supply LLC.
Questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
So a number of these decorative light poles are slated for areas that are going to be redeveloped. So how does that work when we purchase decorative light poles and then put them up and then those areas are then redeveloped?
The question council, would these replace those that are broken and laying down? That's what they're doing. They're replacing those. That were hit in an accident or whatever. That's what these are doing on Park and both South Avenue. Replacements.
Okay, so even though we're replacing ones that have been broken. We're replacing them for them, for them, for us to then have construction in that area. Do the developers then buy us new ones or what happens to them when that area is developed?
If that was to happen, a little kind of construction taking place there. However, if that was to happen, yes, they would have replaced it. We make sure that's part of the agreement. That if the place was there, which is the only do now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from council members? Motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposition or abstentions? Resolution is approved.
Resolution two twelve twenty one authorizing approval to submit a grant application with State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Urban Parks Initiative.
Questions from council? Motion in a second? Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution is approved.
Resolution two thirteen twenty one, which I believe has an amendment from the Public Works Director. Which is authorizing approval to submit, submit a grant application with the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Green Acres Program.
Thank you, clerk. This resolution itself, there was some new amendments these things have added to it to get things done. So the new number, I'm just going to read the old was that you have in front of you was two million four hundred and fifty one thousand four hundred and two thousand five cents. That number will become two million eight hundred and two thousand seven thirty six dollars. In the form of a matching grant, which was the one in front of you was one million eight hundred and eighty thousand five five one, fifty four cents. The new number will be two million one hundred and two thousand fifty two dollars. And the grant itself was in front of you now, you come, you have the six hundred and twelve dollars, it has been fifty, six and twelve thousand, it has been fifty dollars, fifty one cents. The new number will be seven hundred thousand six hundred and eighty four dollars for the loan. And the old project cost that was two million four five one four oh two oh five in front of you is now two million eight hundred and two thousand seven thirty six dollars. And then the last now therefore be resolved, that number of two million four five one four oh two oh five inadvertently should have been seven hundred thousand, should be changed to seven hundred thousand six eight four. Those are the numbers for this green egg spending that was committed for funded with the space to the project, rest more as a project.
Thank you, director. Any questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Um, if possible, the next time that we have amendments like that, could we get that in writing? Because Director Dabney was just saying numbers and it was just numbers coming at me, but I wasn't really able to follow it. But if it was written down, I think I would have been able to follow it a little bit better, but it just sounds like we need to change numbers for a grant. So I mean, in the grand scheme of things, that's not a huge deal, but I think it would be easier and a little bit more convenient is if we had those in front of us. Instead of just hearing numbers.
We'll get a copy revised, revised resolution and everything, get all the numbers in.
Thank you.
Will that be for everyone, director?
Absolutely. When I say yes, I'm talking generally, yes, everyone, yes.
Thank you.
The director did forward those, those amendments to me. I should have forwarded them over to councils right before the meeting, but I'll make sure all council members have them as well. And those, I do have those for the records for those amendments. We just need somebody to. Make a motion to amend so those that were read into the record can be amended to the resolution.
Okay, can we have that motion to amend?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, the amendment has been approved. And now we'll entertain a, a motion to accept this motion. Can we have a motion in a, in a second?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, amended resolution is approved.
Resolution two fourteen twenty one authorizing approval to submit a grant application with the NJDO two, NJDOT fiscal year twenty twenty two. Date and municipal lead for roadway improvement project.
Any questions from council? Motion in a second?
Moved.
All those in favor say aye. Any state abstentions or opposition? The resolution is approved.
Resolution two fifteen twenty one authorizing the award of a contract to Midwest Construction.
Any questions from council members?
Yeah, just real quickly, when, when is this supposed to start happening over there on Prospect?
With this, the preconstruction meeting will be once this is done on Wednesday, which I moves ahead with the, with the next two weeks.
Thank you.
Further questions from council members? Motion in a second, please?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
Resolution two sixteen twenty one authorizing approval for a street opening at four oh one Spooner in New Jersey American Water.
Any questions from council members? Motion in a second?
So moved.
All those.
Aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution is approved.
Resolution two seventeen twenty one authorizing a lean placement for property cleanup for thirty three families.
Questions from council? Motion in a second?
Moved.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
Resolution two eighteen twenty one designating July as Parks and Recreation Month.
Questions from council? Motion in second?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
Resolution two nineteen twenty one authorizing the city of Plainfield Health Division to enter into a sub grant agreement with Proceed Inc. to support lead abatement activities.
Questions from council? Questions from council? Motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Any favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposition or extensions? Resolution is approved.
Yeah, the council president, quick point of order here on the next two uh R two twenty dash twenty-one and R two twenty-one dash twenty-one, there seems to be a discrepancy between the agenda, the PDF agenda and then the online agenda with the backup. They seem to be flipped and I I just don't know which one is which.
Uh, so for the for the record, uh two twenty will be the Cisco and two twenty-one will be Avaya.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions from council regarding resolution two twenty dash twenty-one?
Is that the Cisco one?
That is Cisco, yes.
Yes.
Okay, go right ahead, Councilwoman Davis.
Um. So with this grant, I see that we're moving from what we used to do before to now cybersecurity. Um, how many people? So the question is, um, what's the benefit to the community for us to continue? Because it seems like when we do these programs, we don't really have a lot of people uh graduating from them. Um, and so also have we looked into maybe nonprofits or other organizations that we can support who may do this work a little bit better than us?
Oh. The last two modules that.
No.
No. Little choppy. You just turn the volume up there, adjust the location of the microphone.
Council President, may I make a comment while we're waiting for uh?
You may.
I believe the 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 key word here is emphasis on certification. Um, I'm pretty sure that Director Jackson will agree with me. Um, I don't believe the previous training was certification, if if it was, please correct me.
You mean?
But this he, this, well.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry. I'm, Councilman, if you want to finish your thought, that's fine.
Uh, the the previous training, I don't believe was certification. And in the uh the meeting um uh in the previous day or so ago, um, I don't believe that uh the training that we had before was actual certification. So this is what makes it a big difference. I'm pretty sure a lot of people will want to be certified for this particular area of uh cybersecurity.
So.
Well, that's what makes it different, that's what makes it different, and I'm pretty sure that the outcome will be much different and and the on the receiving end of the people that will want to be certified.
Thank you, Councilman. Um. Everybody's hearing me okay now?
Perfect, now.
Okay, great, thanks. Um, so the two modules that we previously offered were um through Cisco was a CCNA certification and Councilman got it right. I mean, you, there's a further step you have to take at the end of those classes, which is that you have to register, take the exam in order to get certified. Um, the bigger difference, I would say, is that this module is not as um strenuous as those two modules were. This is to offer cybersecurity certification and um our research has shown, not only ours, but right across the country, um, there were several major breaches uh impacting, um, which impacted cybersecurity across the nation over the past year or two. And there's a prediction from the industry experts that there are going to be at least thirty-five million openings for cybersecurity experts across the nation. So we felt that it was expedient to uh have this kind of offering, which is something that um any one of our residents, even without prior experience, could benefit from and provide them with a job, with a uh promise of a job probably. Um, at the end of it, it's something that they could take immediate advantage of that would immediately play, make them marketable.
Thank you. So I think. My concern is that we put more money into this program, but we're not really seeing a return on the money that we're putting into this program.
Well.
No, go ahead.
Sorry, the, we did have a one person last year who did get CCNA certified and what we did is that we cut the funding this year. We cut it down to less than half of what we invested last year and we'll be able to run two classes concurrently, evening and daytime classes with the amount of funding that we're asking for. And we have the potential to have at least thirty people certified under this program, which is again, as I emphasize, it's much less strenuous than the program that was offered in during the last two modules.
Um, I appreciate that, um, but I think one out of fifteen is six percent. And I think when we're talking about public funds and being stewards of public funds, it's concerning to me that in the investment that we're making, only six percent of the people who are taking advantage of this are actually passing and getting the um and getting the certification. Um, I'm glad that you did try to go a different route this time, but also this is probably the second or third year where we're not really seeing results from this program. And maybe this just isn't the market or the niche for the city of Plainfield, right? Maybe there are other activities or agencies that we can partner with who have already have the people in the social capital to do this successfully and we can just help and support them in that, right? So I think is uh, I think there is a place for this and there is a role for this in the community, but is the city of Plainfield really the best person to do this, especially with public funds? When we only have a six percent completion rate is my, is my only concern with this.
There's a couple of things I'd like to point out. One was that um, one of the things that was an impediment last year was the fact, of course, that we were in the midst of a pandemic. So our instructor actually pivoted and actually um presented the classes virtually. He, in addition, he also, you know, made himself available for tutoring after hours and on weekend um during the weekend hours, which is why I believe that, you know, even the one person who passed was able to succeed. Because a lot, we had quite a few people who immediately, once the classes went virtual, they dropped out. That was not something we predicted when we, you know, entered into the agreement um with our tutor to offer this class. The other thing is that we also offered it, we also partnered with Union County College, to your point of um utilizing agencies that may be more prepared than we are. Um, the one person who did pass was one who took, who was in the class that was tutored by the person um that, or the instructor that, the instructor that we had um secured, right? So I'm, it's not necessarily uh, you know, like we're trying to teach the classes ourselves, we do have someone who's Cisco certified who understands um how to deal with the situation. And he's uh very committed to the student success, he gives all the time that's needed if they ask for it and they're willing for tutoring. And like I said, he does give up his evenings and weekends. So I do think that with this model, we'll see a greater level of success. And I think that it's very important for us as a city to continue providing avenues for residents, um especially those that may have been disadvantaged, to find a way to, you know, get a job in a more competitive industry.
So I want to be clear, this is not a knock at the the person teaching the course, right? I don't, I I think there is value in these courses, but I don't think that we may necessarily be the agency to provide that, right? So um, that's my only concern, once again, because it is public funds, what ways are we working to really get the most bang or reach the most public for this? Because it is kind of concerning for us to continue to put money in to only have one or two students graduate or complete or get a certification every year that we redo this, right? There's, it's not a knock at the Department of Technology, it's not a knock at the person teaching it, right? But this just may not be the best place for us and this not, may not be the market in which we're going to see that, which is okay. But if we're going to continue to put public funds behind this, let's do it in a way that will be the most beneficial for not only the community, but for the people who pay taxes to pay for these type of programs. To see that we're really getting the most bang for our buck. So that is my only concern is that we're not really, like, this may not be the market for us and that's okay. Right? The city of Plainfield may not be able, may not be able to do everything, right? That's why we have private industry, that's why we have the nonprofit sector. Um, so that's really my concern. And uh, even though this will most likely pass, it's my hope that uh we look at who's completing, how many are completing. And if it's still the same thing for next year, that we look at other ways to deliver the same types of goods and service. But I am okay with us being here a year from now and me being wrong and we have fifteen people completing, right? Cause that's really the goal. The goal is not for me to be right, that only one person's to complete. The goal is for us to have fifteen people complete. So hopefully, next year this time, if we don't have fifteen people complete, we have a way that we are able to use these funds in the best and most productive way. Um, so that was my only concern, it's not a knock at anyone or the type of job that they're doing.
Any other council member have input or questions?
I do, just, just very quickly, I I I want to just say ditto to everything Councilwoman Davis said, but I also want to say that. You know, th- these issues are on the rise, the city had its own issue with this uh a couple of years ago, if I recall. Um, the the cybersecurity shut down a pipeline that affected gas distribution and and now gas prices. Um, and so I also don't think we're in the, you know, we we should be in the business of of doing this, because I don't think we know anything about how to set up the the or pick the right vendor to do it, how to manage it. And I also, you know, three times, I think I heard that it's not as arduous and I want my cybersecurity training to be pretty arduous so that we're not having all these things hacked and uh and ransomered, so.
Any other questions from council members?
Overall, my my thought is, um, I I do want better success rates than what we had uh last year. Uh, we are learning and growing, or wha- what I see is that the the city is learning and growing from its previous uh program. Uh, and and trying to do it so that we have uh, so that there are higher success rates. From what I know, Director, the cybersecurity uh coincident, uh incidentally, is a more lucrative field uh than the CCNA. So that also presents an opportunity uh for our residents to be cer- certified in something that that actually makes more money than than the previous one. Um, but I, you know, in a year, we will see uh what the results are uh from this. See how many people uh follow through on it, see how many people were, you know, were certified, the individuals uh gained employment, et cetera. Those are all things that I know all will be interested in to see uh how our money was spent. But I think overall, you know, I'm going to continue to 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 bet on uh the Plainfield residents, you know, that that people want to be employed. You know, this is an issue where you kind of get hits, hit from 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 either side, you know, if we if we do nothing, uh then then we're dinged for not doing enough to help people become employed. And, you know, when we try to do things, then, you know, sometimes you get a, get a bad rap for that if if the the results, you know, so there there's no, there's no magic solution for this, you know? But I'm just happy that there are some efforts and if we find that these efforts are misplaced, then something needs to happen, you know? So I agree with all the comments and the discussion, uh and with that, uh we'll, I'll entertain a motion and a.
President, before we get to the motion, I I want to clarify my comments, right? It's not about the city of Plainfield doing nothing, right? I think that something should be done. Um, how that is being done is really where my concern is. But I do agree that we want to do something to make sure that our residents are employable and they are employed, because that only benefits the city at the end of the day.
Okay, well, the, my comments certainly weren't directed to you specifically, those are just my overall comments, uh certainly not not directed at you. Um, you know, but but what I will say is is we all can put our heads together to figure out if if there's a way that the city could partner. Uh, obviously cities, the city can't give funds directly to a a nonprofit, uh but perhaps if if there's some creative way that we're able to to have someone else assist us or or to bring people who are more 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 motivated uh or to create some type of program where people have more incentives to finish uh that that can supplement what we do. I mean, that's, that's, the ci- city partnership is is always going to be welcome. And I think, you know, through through the 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 different people uh in the community, uh the different council people, you know, we we should always be looking for ways that we can partner with the city to make our 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 offerings more robust and our our money, our tax dollars better spent. So, you know, appreciate the discussion. Entertain a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, clerk, can I have a roll call? Are you on mute still?
Said for the record, this is resolution two twenty dash twenty-one uh authorizing you enter into agreement, provide Cisco cybersecurity certification. Roll call, council members, Davis.
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
No ransom?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes, sir, yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
In favor, one opposed, resolution passes, we now come to resolution two twenty-one dash twenty-one, authorizing approval to enter into an annual maintenance support contract for the Avaya IP office phone.
Questions from council?
I just have one quick comment and it's only because it's the Avaya system is that could this administration have some sort of policy in place where everybody has voicemail that is, has a recorded message? I get a lot of comments from people that they get transferred to a number and it just, the Avaya phone messaging system and there is no personalized message, so they're not even sure who they're getting.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, entertain a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition or extensions? Resolution is approved. All right, uh, we now come to ordinances on front first reading. Clerk, please read MC twenty twenty-one dash twenty by title.
MC twenty-one dash twenty is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield, County of Union, New Jersey, adopting the Sixth Amendment to the hundred ninety-seven scattered sites redevelopment plan dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, Council President, can I make a couple of comments since this was brought up in the public?
Yes, you may, Director.
Uh, first of all, I wanted to make some clarification here. What is before uh city council and what was before the planning board was the redevelopment plan, so I just want to clarify that. No site plans have been submitted to the Department of Economic Development. Uh, site plans, when we receive them and they're in a historic district, we always take them to the Historic Preservation Commission for their input specifically to the planning board. Uh, and so at this time, uh, we're not discussing site plans, we're not discussing a design. And furthermore, several months ago, the planner and I uh in uh in response to transparency, uh took this redevelopment plan to the Historic Preservation Commission for comment. We spent three and a half hours addressing public comments and concerns. That doesn't mean that we always agree, but we have received public input. And then we took that plan, we made a slight modification in that uh plan based on the input at the commission. Uh, but I would like to also say that the Crescent area. Uh, but I would like to also say that the Crescent area historic district is challenged. Uh, there needs to be more investment in this particular area. And that uh, it is not a true statement uh, that there are no multifamily buildings in this area. There was a density analysis presented to uh, the planning board associated with this amendment. This plan has been around since two thousand. And as uh, Bill Michelson said himself, these lots have been vacant for decades. And so these lots were sold at public auction to the highest bidder. And now we would like to move forward with the plan uh, that addresses investment in this area. Thank you.
Okay, questions from council members?
Yes.
Comments? Councilwoman Davis?
Um, so are all of these properties currently city-owned properties, Director Jackson?
No, uh, we have very few of the city-owned properties left. Uh, the properties uh, that we're talking about permitted uses are privately held. Uh, these properties were sold uh, over the years at public auction.
Okay, um, also, can you explain the different parking requirements for the two areas? So for the East Ninth Project, uh, is one point five parking spaces per unit. But for the Arlington Avenue, it's one per dwelling unit.
Uh, we uh, did go for greater parking. The way the plan uh, reads is that the parking should be in the rear of the property. And that uh, the way the plan reads is that any proposed uh, site plan has to be complementary to the other properties in the area.
Thank you. Um, as somebody who grew up in that area in a multifamily private house, I do know that that area has a number of multifamily private houses there that are uh, doing just fine. I live there, I'm good. Like, I mean, things are going to happen, but I think uh, Mr. Michelson made a good point that we had a piece of land that had been vacant for over forty years. And I think the mayor uh, talks about it when we talk about redevelopment all the time, about what is the cost of blight to the city? And what is the cost of not having that piece of land? Uh, not having that piece of land developed? And uh, how much money are we losing out in terms of taxes by just having people pay taxes on a vacant piece of land? So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman? Councilwoman? Councilwoman McKenna?
Uh, yeah, so, you know, I just want to bring up a couple of things. And one is that uh, the director is correct that there, this is not a site plan. Um, there, there is definitely a developer that's interested in this property, so we can not play that game. But this is a redevelopment plan and a redevelopment plan sets the parameters for what an applicant would come to the planning board or to the city and then the planning board for approval. And that redevelopment plan has bulk standards and those bulk standards tell you how far you can go back, how far you have to build from the back of the property, the front of the property, how many stories you can go up? And the density of it. So that area was zoned for four units per acre. And this bulk standard is now sixteen units per acre. That area, the Crescent District was re-zoned uh, so that the density level that is there, because the density level is high there, but could be brought down to a, a, a more appropriate level for that area. So what we're doing is we're spot zoning this particular area. The director did say that this plan's been around since two thousand. Let's be clear on that. This plan is the scattered lot plan. These lots are all over the city. It is not East Ninth that has been around just solely since two thousand. These are all these hundred and ninety-seven, which turned into a hundred and sixty-two, which turned into a hundred and twelve, which turned into whatever it is at this point. Um, because it's been modified so many times. So thi- this is not the intended uh, design and density for that area. It was re-zoned for that so that we could get the densities down. No one said there isn't multifamily there. What they said was that there are illegal multifamilies there, which means there's a legal two-family that is a four or five family. And so the, the, the comparing this density to the existing density is, is, is an inappropriate and non-transparent methodology. What we want to do is compare the density to what is intended in that area by the rezoning that was done years ago. And it is intended to be lower than this. So, so those are not clear delineations there that the director is, is stating. This is way too much uh, for that area. The, it's, it's already overburdened with the density and illegal density that does not get any attention from the city. And thi- this is not appropriate. And in addition, you have people in Carnegie who bought homes, many of whom I have spoken with, who are very upset about this because they came from other areas, some I know from Queens and from Brooklyn, and they wanted to come to a, a little quieter, lower density area. And now they are going to, right behind them, have a three-story building towering over them. And I know that the director's going to say, we don't have a site plan. But what you do have is the ab- ability to put three stories there. That's in the bulk standards. You also have one and a half parking spaces, not appropriate in that area. It's already overcrowded with street parking and one and a half parking spaces is going to put more cars out on that street. This is an ill-conceived bulk standard on the East Ninth. Uh, part of this redevelopment plan and, and, and I will in no uncertain terms be voting against it.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, please.
Sure.
I am always baffled when some people would rather see light than see the kinds of improvements that we have been bringing to the city over the last several years. And I can't say it any better than Councilor Davis just stated. And those of us who are familiar with that particular neighborhood, we know that there's a plethora of multifamily units along that whole East Ninth Street corridor, leading all the way from Park Avenue out to West Seventh Street. And so one of the things that I will keep doing is working hard in partnership with you, the members of the council, who want to see transformation, to make sure that every neighborhood is improved. And those who want to see East Ninth Street remain blighted as it is, who would want to see that lot that we are discussing stay as it is and not see the kind of quality improvements that we have seen in other, our neighborhood, this administration will strenuously oppose those ideas and will continue to work in partnership with you, the members of the council, who want to see transformation. We will work to make sure we deliver that for every person who lives in this city, including East, East Ninth Street.
Thank you. Uh, and with that, uh, can we have a motion in a second?
I, I have actually another comment on that. And I want to clarify something is that an empty lot is not blight. And the initiative years ago through the planning board and, and it started years ago, was to turn that into a neighborhood park. So that actually is more in line with the area and, and what's appropriate for Crescent. And, and if you really want to go and deal with blight and issues, then you can deal with the overcrowding that's going on over there, because that's an issue that's there right now.
And I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Bill's ransom?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Mr. President Hockaday?
Yes.
In favor, one opposed, this ordinance has been introduced on first reading. MC twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one is an ordinance approving a tax exemption in accordance with the five-year exemption and abatement law, authorizing the execution of a tax agreement with eight-twenty South Avenue Associates in connection with block six-twenty lot five.
Questions from council?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Um, so that property is already um, vacant, like they took down what was there. And I know a lot of projects can't move forward without pilots. So what happens if for some reason this pilot was not to pass? Is that area, does the developer not go through with the project and that area just remain a vacant lot? Or do they build it anyway?
Okay, so uh, this one is a five-year tax abatement. So it's slightly different than a long-term tax exemption. So this is a five-year tax exemption that the developer is applying for. And uh, de- definitely the developer needs the tax abatement uh, to make the improvement. Uh, yes, they've gone ahead and demolished uh, what was a car wash uh, in terms of preparing. Uh, you can do that uh, ahead of time. Uh, but they own the property. We can't stop them from demolishing anything. Uh, but uh, in order to build the proposed twelve-unit building, uh, they will need the five-year tax exemption. Uh, the uh, our financial consultant did some analysis. Uh, we provided that as an attachment. Uh, the uh, tax assessor uh, uh, sent a letter recommending uh, that a council approved this tax exemption. Uh, pretty much, other than new construction, if this was a rehab, uh, the tax assessor then could approve this under the five-year uh, uh, statute. But again, this is a new construction, therefore we have to bring it to council.
Uh, thank you. I'd just like to know the what ifs for things. Um, can you just kind of explain for the public the difference between the thirty-year um, abatement that has been on the agenda uh, more frequently? And then this five-year abatement and how they're different and what the benefits are between the five-year one?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, uh, I do have Jennifer Credidio, if uh, we could allow her to speak, she probably could address that question. Uh, can we allow Jennifer Credidio? She's uh, out in the public.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Yeah, there she goes. Okay.
Ms. Credidio, uh, you, uh, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Um, good evening, Mayor, Council President, Council Members. Um, the Councilwoman Davis, I'm happy that you asked that question. There is a lot of confusion sometimes between the five-year and, and the thirty-year. Um, so the five-year, the thirty-year program is mainly intended for brand-new construction and for construction that really needs a long-term assistance in order to pencil out financially. Uh, it's restricted for certain purposes and, and only in redevelopment areas, UEZ areas and where you have affordable housing. The five-year statute is uh, more, the municipality is more broadly empowered uh, to enact the five-year abatements. As the director said, you can often do them where you have improvements, rehabs, or conversions um, with only the approval of the tax assessor without having to go through the tax agreement process at council. This project, what they're proposing is that if they have a five-year phase in under a tax agreement, they could build the, the finances would work to build the twelve units here. So we could car wash to having the twelve units, which in year six will pay a hundred percent of conventional taxes. So um, the five-year is also a little different. Essentially, um, what it does is it changes your assessment rather than your payment. So here, um, we're going to take your assessment and we're going to say, okay, for the first year, you are going to pay X percentage of otherwise applicable taxes, second year, Y percentage, as opposed to the long term where they're paying a percentage of their revenues. Um, so it gives, I think, a little more flexibility to the municipality. Um, and because it's a short term, it's a really great tool for municipalities to be able to give a project um, a boost that uh, will come online and within five years will be paying regular conventional taxes again. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Very welcome.
Do you have any follow-up questions uh, for Jennifer while we have her here? Okay, any other follow-up questions from council members? Jennifer? If not, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Bill's ransom?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Mr. President Good?
Yes.
Hockaday?
Yes.
Looks in favor, one opposed, this ordinance has been introduced on first reading. We now come to MC twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two, which is an ordinance to amend and supplement chapter sixteen vehicles and traffic. Article seven through streets, stop intersections, stop and yield intersections, designating certain four-way stop intersections.
Any questions from council members? I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, this resolution is uh, approved on first reading.
Ordinance MC twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three is an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property and a deed of roadway dedication for nominal consideration from Spooner Court HOA LLC, property identified as block five thirty-two lot eighteen oh four, commonly known as Spooner Court located in the city of Plainfield County of Union and State of New Jersey.
Any questions from council members?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilmember Davis.
Um, what are the responsibilities of the city and what are the liabilities to the city for acquiring this property? I know that this is something um, that residents have been on the last few meetings about. Um, so yeah, if we could just talk about what the responsibilities will now be of the city for acquiring this property and what are also the liabilities?
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis. I'll address the question. Um, first, I'd like to say that originally I had not recommended uh, that uh, the city accept uh, support um, and take ownership of the roadway. Um, since that time, uh, the mayor and myself have met with the residents of Spooner Court um, and encouraged them to uh, pay the outstanding tax lien on the property. Um, so that liability property, I'm happy to say that uh, due to the mayor's intervention in the situation, he was able to explain to them how important it was that they pay that tax lien and they have now they have, as a group, split that uh, that tax lien and have paid it off. Um, I'd also like to thank Councilman McCray for bringing this whole situation to first residents of Spooner Court uh, who were affected by this. And I want to thank both the mayor and Councilman McCray for their intervention here. Um, so now that the tax lien has been full, um, we are in a position where I can recommend to the council that we accept this roadway. As a city roadway, it will be handled BW as uh, city roadways are handled. Um, unfortunately for the residents of Spooner Court, they were left uh, by a developer with association that went default. Um, we are stepping in now to accept that roadway as we do with many roadways throughout the city. Um, our liability and our responsibility is the same as we would with any roadway. Uh, but I can now recommend that to you because the tax lien has been satisfied. Hope that answers your question.
Yes, um, there were some other like issues with like PSCNG and the lighting and all of that. Does the city now take care of that as well? Or are we going to have this issue come back up again?
No, no, the, well, any outstanding bills are theirs. Uh, any new, any new uh, bills, PSCNG, responsible to the city as we with any of our streetlights. So um, it falls now under the city. It would be a city roadway.
Thank you.
Further questions from my couns- council colleagues or comments? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is, this ordinance is approved on first reading.
Council President?
Yes.
Uh, ladies first.
Um, before we move to public
Before we move to public comment, just two quick things. One, I got a text message that Dr. Harold Ude, better known as Old Doc the Blogger, transitioned from this earth on Saturday or Sunday. So if we can do a resolutions of condolence for his family or something, we just found out, well, it just happened Saturday after the agenda was already set. But also if the council could kind of just acknowledge that because he was very instrumental in the reporting of Plainfield politics. And we talk about somebody who was the keeper of history. He was another person in this city who was the keeper of the city's history. And then my second thing is with the governor now lifting the state of emergency, how does that affect council meetings? And are we going back to in-person meetings anytime soon?
Okay. The short answer is yes, we will go back to in-person county council meetings. And, and we're working out the details of, of how that, to make sure that we're keeping everybody as safe as possible when we do that. The plan is being worked on. And, and yes, Dr. Ude, Old Doc was, is certainly a legend. Will be forever inscribed in Plainfield's history. And we send our condolences and we certainly will have a resolution for next month honoring his, his life and legacy. Councilman Good?
Yes, Council President, not to prolong the meeting, but I think it would be appropriate for me to mention this. There are some people that are, have logged into the meeting tonight and I definitely wouldn't want this to go. I don't want them to think that it's gone on a death year. I have received multiple text messages and calls and emails about the noise from the east end to the west end and just to be specific, music. And since the, I, I disbeat to the, the police director about it and since she is here, I would like her to explain to the residents basically what they have to do and what will happen when they have to come out to, to the residents that are involved in violation of our ordinance of the noise ordinance.
Director Burgess, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. Good question, being that we're going into the summer months. First of all, I want to say we do have a noise ordinance, which is in our, which is 10 colon 8-3. And one of the things I want to make sure our residents understand that there is no timeframe in this ordinance, certain hours based, or based on loud music, there's no timeframe. With loud music, it's basically going to be what's convenient hearing, I should say, to the person that's listening or playing the music. And it can't, it shouldn't be within 1,000, outside of 1,000 feet of whether it's the residence, a vehicle, or where the music is playing. Now, that can be, I guess, a bit subjective. However, the, if that, if a resident encounters that, they can call the police and the police will come and attempt to determine if in fact there is a violation of that noise ordinance. Normally a warning would be given. If it continues and they respond back and can determine that there is a violation, then a summons should be issued for that, that noise complaint. I know we also get noise complaints in regards to mufflers on vehicles and things like that. We don't have a decimal. I know that came up in a meeting that I was in. But in our ordinance, it does speak about the muffled sound that would not be something that's offensive to others. Basically, again, a bit subjective, which basically would be something that's not extremely loud. So those things are in our ordinance. Can they be a bit big in a sense? Yes and no, because most of us know when especially loud music is, is just overly loud and annoying our, our communities or our neighbors. So I, but I do want to encourage our residents, if you encounter these situations, to call the police. If it continues, please do not hesitate to call back. And if in fact that you encounter any other concerns with those calls, then you can always ask to speak to a supervisor and, and address your concerns or complaints that you may have.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, council people. A total of 60 minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. Each speaker will be allotted five minutes. If you wish to be heard, hit the hand icon. It will be unmuted. Give your name and address for the record. The floor is now open. This is Burwinkle, name and address for the record.
Hi, Mary Burwinkle, 1785 Sleepy Hollow Lane. I recently learned that the city will receive a $24 million federal grant for COVID recovery. That is great and I hope the administration will give more detail on how the money can be used. I'm concerned about City Hall reopening from COVID from an IT perspective and I wonder if any of this money will or could be used for COVID reopening. I appreciate the work that IT employees did to conduct all meetings electronically during COVID, but wonder if the extra effort could have been at the expense of reopening planning? What are the plans to update or consolidate city software? And to replace obsolete additions of both hardware and software? Have all patches and security updates been installed for all the laptops that city employees use? Being checked for malware? How are employees being trained about this? No one can pick up a newspaper or listen to news these days without hearing about ransomware attacks. Have we received, Denny? I would be very dismayed as a taxpayer learned that we were not prepared for this and ended up paying ransom with taxpayer dollars after spending grant money on other things. So thank you.
Thank you. Who do you have next? Ms. Coons, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Sharice Coons, 141 McKinley Place in Plainfield. First, I'd like to give Mayor Map a congratulations. You know, congratulations on the elections. I have a couple of issues that I'd like to discuss this evening. Let's see, the first one being the R211-21, that's the purchase of the decorative, decorative streetlight poles. I know every year about October, I come to the city council meetings and I talk about the lighting in the streets. Those lights are cute and they're pretty, but I hope that they illuminate the streets. Some of the residents, and I'll include myself in that, I'm getting old. I can't see with those pretty lights. So please make sure that they turn the density up so we can see. The next thing is I've come to this meeting and I've made the comment before that all investment in Plainfield is not good investment in Plainfield and I'll stand by that. You have some of these investors that are coming into the town, they're buying up these properties. And a lot of these properties are multifamily properties. And they're renting to people who will not, who will not and do not speak up for themselves. I can tell you that in my area, and I'll be perfectly honest with you, I live next door to a slumlord. He, he's sitting pretty in his house in Titten Falls and I'm living next to hell, the hell that he has caused next door. I have complained multiple times to the city about the property. It's 139 McKinley Place. I have complained many times. I know Councilman Good and a, a couple of the other folks, you know, came out and they cleaned up across the street and everything looked nice and it looked perfect. That was for naught because now it's littered again with liquor bottles, beer bottles. It's, it's worse than it was before. And I know, um, last week when Mayor Map and I believe Assemblywoman Carter were walking my neighborhood, she did make note of that. Across the street on McKinley Place looks worse than it did before you guys did the original cleanup. I did see, there what was that, 217-21, that was about property cleanups. I was happy to see that until I looked at the list and I didn't see 139 McKinley Place on that list. I don't know what I have to do to get the city's attention about that house. But I, I need someone to please give me some, some consideration about the house. 139 McKinley Place is a, it's a pain to the entire block and everybody on the block is talking about it. Let's see, what else did I have? I'm sorry. Oh, overcrowding in the apartments. I know there were a number of people that have come on to talk about the overcrowding in the apartment. I'm hoping that that is something that the city is really looking into. I know again at 139, it's a, I think a one-bedroom apartment, there must be eight or nine adults or excuse me, eight or nine people living in that, in that house. So please make sure that you guys are starting to address overcrowding in these apartments. It is causing a lot of issues. I mean, we have issues with parking and a lot of problems in the area. I know Director Burgess, if you kind of look at the records of anything that happened on McKinley Place, I don't know what happened over here Friday night, but I believe people were stabbed on McKinley Place. I think it was, it was the, the cops were here and we had ambulance. I think two people got stabbed over here Friday night. So I, please, McKinley Place needs some attention. And the problem property is 139 McKinley. Thank you.
Thank you for your. Mr. Johnson, name and address for the record. Thank you for calling. Unmute yourself, Mr. Johnson, and give your name and address for the record. The floor is yours.
Oh, my name is Jamesy Johnson. I live at 1128 Dorsey Place, Plainfield, New Jersey. I just want to call in and this is just for Mayor Map and the First Lady. In March, I was at an unfortunate, I was very unfortunate because I received, I had the stroke. And I want to thank them for being concerned because those two and Ms. Jolette Mills and even Brother Hockday, you had my concern. And I want to congratulate you on your win. And my family, and I'm very pleased that you're in, you're serving another four years. And I am very fortunate that I am as well as I am because I could be walking much worse. And the only thing that's wrong with me now is that I have to use a walker. But it meant a lot to me for me to hear from the First Lady and the mayor of Plainfield, New Jersey. So I want to thank you very much as well.
Thank you for calling in, Mr. Johnson, and we wish you a full 100% recovery. I don't know who the person is, but they're on a Galaxy S20. Please unmute yourself and give your name and address for the record.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you. Name and address for the record, please.
Darrell Morgan, 943 Hillside Avenue. I just want to get an understanding of how the council work. I was very vocal on the previous election, you know, and it's brought to my attention, but it had to be brought to my attention. I know I rarely attend the meetings. So I am going to make sure I do that this, this time because you know, it's, it's hard to talk the talk, you got to walk the walk. And in saying that, I would like to see the mayor, McKenna, those guys to also walk the walk. The lady congratulated you on winning. And then she went on to say the, the crime, the stabbings, the deplorable conditions of properties right next door. So, you know, we understand that some people really don't know what's good. But at the end of the day, you guys won. You and McKenna won. Congratulations. Ms. Welch, I really wish you had won. You have always, prior to your engagement to politics, have always put your self in the community first. I mean, the community first, knowing with your children. I know you've been a great councilwoman and will continue to, please continue to work hard in the community as you have prior to even indulging in politics. Thank you for this moment. I will be ever-present.
That's it.
Thank you, sir. We welcome your participation and any and all community participation. It makes us a stronger community, the more that are involved. Ms. People of R.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I just have to check because I had issues with my computer today. Nancy Pivara, 1129 Merle Avenue. I, I appreciate the council's passage of the two resolutions for the Historical Society. We're trying to move forward even during COVID. I did hear from the fence company, hopefully within the next month, two months. There's an issue with getting the fence out of Canada because of the wood supplies are so short. But hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have a new fence up, which will make the area look better. I appreciate the council people who have supported the Historical Society in the Drake House in the city of Plainfield. We've been in partnership since 1922. Next year, hopefully we'll be able to have a gala so we can celebrate the public-private partnership. I also want to make mention because Councilwoman Welch and Councilwoman Davis came by during the special garden tour. We do have a COVID garden, a memorial garden that we fixed up. Hopefully by the spring, the bulbs will plant. We planted bulbs in memory of the 193 and maybe ongoing numbers of people that have unfortunately passed away due to COVID. I'd like to let residents know that if they have obituaries of family members that they would like to share, they can drop them off at the Drake House. There is a slot that they can put them in. And the library and the Historical Society will work on a memorial book so that years to come, people will remember what happened here during 2020 and 21. Right now, we have some flags that are there, but bulbs have been planted for, in memory of the victims of COVID and you know, it's, it's not easy to ask people to step out of their comfort zone, but I realize that a lot of people did not have the opportunity to mourn their family members. And this would be a way that they could be remembered. And it's up to the family members to decide if they want to share with the Historical Society Library and the library will put it in their local history room and we'll keep it in our archives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is Welch. Unmute yourself and give your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Alcina Welch and I'm at 508 Church Place here in the city of Plainfield. I'd like to congratulate Mayor Map. And I'd like to say we have a Cisco program at the high school and maybe we could get some of our young people involved in Director Clayton Hunt, I believe you have, you had talked about the Cisco program. Am I correct? Yes. And if we could get something maybe going, it would help some of them to get money maybe for their future. I'd also like to say I've been in Plainfield since 1970. I moved here from North Carolina. I've seen the city of Plainfield be down. I've seen the city of Plainfield come up. And I think if we would just continue to pray for the city of Plainfield, pray for our directors, both state, federal, and local, that they would get more direction and maybe we could be of help to them. Because we, I mean, I, I don't want to live in a city where we have nothing but affordable housing. I spent too much money over here on Church Place. I've been in this house since 1971. I bought it brand-new. I've worked hard. I worked for years. I worked on the house next door. My daughter lives in that house. We bought two houses here on, here on Church Place. And I want to see the city of Plainfield grow. We didn't stay here all this time. I could have gone back to North Carolina by now if I thought the city was going to go down. I want to see the city develop. And I appreciate all that, that Mayor Map and his administration is doing to build the city of Plainfield. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Welcome and appreciate your comments. Anyone else in public comment?
No, there's no one else with their hand up.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions or abstentions? Okay, and how about a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Thank you all. The meeting is adjourned.